Call the council meeting forward, please be seated. All right, a motion to reconvene the open council meeting. All those in favor, opposed and carried. And we have a proclamation to start tonight's meeting, and councillor Jordan, you'll be reading the proclamation.
We do thank you, your honour, on office of the mayor of the city of Burnaby, a proclamation for National Aboriginal Day. Whereas National Aboriginal Day is recognised nationwide as an opportunity for all Canadians to recognise the unique heritage, diverse cultures and contributions of First Nations, Inuit and Métis peoples, whereas Burnaby is a community where the contribution of all residents are acknowledged and appreciated, and whereas cultural diversity is a fundamental characteristic of Burnaby, and whereas Burnaby is a community that celebrates its cultural diversity. Now therefore I, Derek R. Corrigan, Mayor of Canada. Do you like that news? Just promoted it.
That's a nice promotion, I didn't know that.
I'm sorry. Mayor of Burnaby do hereby proclaim June 21st, 2016, as National Aboriginal Day in the city of Burnaby.
Thank you very much councillor Jordan, and thank you for the promotion, I appreciate it. All right, a motion to adopt the minutes of the open council meeting held on June the 13th, 2016. It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed and carried. A motion to hear the delegation. All those in favor, opposed and carried. And the delegation is Queen Ho, Ju and Kai Liang. Please come forward.
My name is Annie Zhang, I'm a friend of a couple, the wife is Ju Qinghua and the husband is Mr. Liang, he's beside me. Ms. Ju Qinghua is not feeling well today, she's lying in bed, so that's why I came here on her behalf. Okay, I just have a letters between Ju Qinghua, Ms. Ju and the bylaw coordinator Lisa, so I just read the letters to everyone, so that you can understand the situation. Hi Lisa, sorry for not updating you since last July. As you're aware of, I was struggling with my health condition last year, cross to this year. I'm consistently see the specialist on my kidney issue and looking for the solution to improving my kidney function. We didn't forget this whole issue, we were looking for the affordable contractor to get it done, but later on my health issue became more serious, I have to deal with it as the first priority. One month ago, my blood test result first see the improvement after many months taking the medicine and tracking the test record. Therefore, we started looking for contractor on fixing the building issue again. We realised first, it's pretty hard to find one willing to working on this, to work on this such small project, second, it's even harder to have a contractor with a reasonable price. My husband is not a handyman and he's having his own health issue as well. We are frustrated at the situation, we also worry if our health condition can afford this project. Finally, we decided to sell the house, leave the buyer to fix the building issue, we disclose all information including the closure of the balcony and unauthorised second suite to the prospective buyer, willing to lower our price for buyer to fix the issue. We think it's the best solution, consider our situation and meanwhile comply the bylaw. Could you please give our solution a consideration? This is the first letter, and then the second letter is... So they put the house on the market and it was sold, and they disclosed the whole information to the buyer already, and the buyer willing to take that cost. And so now, they sold the house already. So this is the second letter between Lisa and Ms. Ju. Lisa, thank you for your email, I've been sick over a week, I couldn't get off the bed since last Friday till Tuesday, now I'm still weak. My friend Annie contacted you on my behalf, because she saw how bad I was, and she was trying to help me out. Thank you for attacking all the problems for me. I wonder if I apply the permit, can I pass it to the buyer for them to fix the issue? My realtor must tell you that we've sold our house, we have disclosed the information to the buyer and lowered our price to let them fix the issue. Those days I've been overwhelmed, I couldn't sleep well, so easy to cry. I thought our solution will make everybody's life easier, since we are not capable to fix the house issue. We've lowered our price for the buyer to fix the issue and they will be doing the renovation for sure when they move in, and the city's bylaw will be complied at that time. Please, please, please consider our request. So now, they have actually applied the permit already, the permit for build already on June 12th. Yeah, so, because the buyer, when the buyer sold the house, it's in that condition, so they feel it's not good for them to change it back to, you know, to make change to the old house. Yeah, so they think maybe when the buyer possessed the house, the buyer will restore it back. But anyways, they apply for the building permit already to restore it, so they will try their best.
All right, well, I want, first of all, for the parties to understand that council is considering tonight, a report from our staff, that we have a resolution to file a notice in the land title office that says the property is in contravention of city bylaws, that's what we're addressing. And as far as city council is concerned, we want to be sure, this buyer or any potential future buyer knows that the property is in contravention of city bylaws when they buy it. And we appreciate that they have in fact disclosed this to the buyer, but we want to be sure that prior to this land actually being transferred, that the buyer's lawyers know, and that any mortgage company knows, that the property is in contravention of the city bylaws. And if he's selling it and they intend to repair any of those issues, that's fine, but we require legal notice to anybody that we in fact have done our duty, and we've notified any parties that are going to buy this property, that it is in contravention of city bylaws.
Sorry, but how about, they are not the only one in the neighbourhood that have this issue.
We don't care about that. The only property we're worried about now is this property, and there may be other properties, and they may be brought forward at a different time. Councillor Volko.
I just want to understand, and maybe staff can explain the situation, but you say that the property has been sold and the purchaser has applied to the city for a building permit and a demolition permit?
It's a building permit for restore it back.
Oh, so they've applied to bring the property into compliance?
Yeah, right.
Oh, I misunderstood you, I thought you were saying that they had purchased the property and then they had realised that it would cost too much to fix the situation, they were going to build a new property. So that's not the case.
Yeah, actually, they have worked together with the bylaw coordinator Lisa, to, yeah, to issue, the permit has been issued.
Okay, sorry, that was my misunderstanding, thank you.
All right, well, thank you very much. And councillor, are you ready to bring forward the recommendation? Right, and it's been moved to bring forward item two. All those in favor, opposed, carried, and motion. Moved and seconded, is there any discussion? All those in favor, opposed and carried. We wish you the best of luck in getting the permits done, and all we've done is made sure that this buyer or any future buyer knows that this issue is there. We're glad that they're finding a solution for this, and that they've got a buyer who's willing to take it under those circumstances. And let me, on behalf of council, give our sincere best wishes for the recovery of health for your wife and for yourself. We hope that relieving this stress will help both of you to get healthy soon. Thank you very much.
So that means you want to put a notice, or?
We are putting the notice on the property, it will be taken off at whatever time they've complied with the bylaw. Okay, thank you very much. All right, a motion to receive the correspondence. All those in favor, opposed, carried. And received the letter from the Burnaby area of Scouts Canada, seeking council support of their annual Apple Days awareness campaign, held on Saturday and Sunday, October the 15th and 16th. Youth will be fundraising at locations throughout Burnaby. And there's a motion that council grant permission to... All right, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor, opposed and carried. Motion resolved into a committee of the whole to consider reports. All those in favor, opposed and carried. Moving on then to our reports, and the first report is the annual drinking water quality monitoring report. And, right, it's been moved and seconded, and councillor Kang.
Thank you, your worship. I just wanted to make a few comments about our annual drinking water quality report. As you know, we, people in council are big fans of drink tap, and we are trying to encourage everyone to drink tap, especially at our different festivals. So the report highlights a few things. The city continues to provide excellent drinking water to citizens. In 2015, staff took over 1,600 water samples from various locations in Burnaby for bacteriological analysis, and found them to be in compliance with the provincial requirements. And this is in addition to samples taken by Metro Vancouver on its own transmission mains in Burnaby. Also, I would like to take note that as part of the city's continuous improvement programme in delivering of water, engineering staff continue to replace aging water mains, undertake routine flushing of water mains, monitor water and upgrade staff skills and knowledge base. And as well, the detailed report is available for citizens to see on the city's website, as well in all Burnaby libraries, so if people want to take a look. But also, in line with the topic of water, I want to earnestly encourage residents, in light of last summer's hot summer and the lack of participation, or sorry, precipitation in Metro Vancouver, that we want to use water sustainably to protect the water supply and conserve energy and to help, sorry, and help reduce personal utility costs. So some of the actions that we could do is to turn off the tap while brushing our teeth and washing dishes, to use a city rain barrel to collect rainwater for use in gardens and planters. And we do have rain barrels for sale in our city eco centre, and every year, while I make this report, I try to sell some barrels. So each barrel holds up to 341 litres of water, and they can help you save fuel for water and water consumption. And it is limited in supply, so there's only one water bill available for sale to each resident. As well, I would like to encourage people to check out our indoor water saver kit, because this kit can help you retrofit your kitchen and your bathroom, help reduce water use by 15 to 20 percent, and kits are available at Burnaby City Hall, so you could come and check it as well. So in short, the city of Burnaby, in partnership with Metro Vancouver, consistently deliver clean, safe and aesthetically pleasing drinking water to the residents, businesses and visitors in Burnaby. And in 2015, the physical and chemical and bacteriological characteristic of the water continues to be of high quality and in compliance with applicable regulations and guidelines. And I know some visitors who have come to Metro Vancouver or B.C., praises of how wonderful our tap water is. They might have been surprised at how I opened up the tap and gave them a cup of water, but after they drank it, they were well convinced that they could bottle some up and take them home. So I am very proud to give this water report today, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Volko.
Well, thank you, your worship. It's a lengthy report, and we have copies of it here, the hard copy, I just wanted to remind people in the city here how fortunate we are in order to have this quality of water, that through our taxes, we every year get this report, and we're assured that, as councillor Kang says, you can turn on your taps and get the water. But I did want to make the point that we just had a proclamation read in regards to National Aboriginal Day, and I wanted to make sure that we're still all aware that in the majority of First Nations communities across this country, the majority of them are still under, for many, many years, boil water orders. They don't have the luxury of the testing that we do here, and the reassurance that you can just turn on your tap and you can get yourself a glass of water, and you can drink it without any fear. That's not the case across most of our First Nations here, so I just wanted to remind everyone here that we're quite fortunate as a community to be able to have these reports come out. There's a lot of people in this country that don't have that luxury.
Right, you ready for, oh, councillor Calendino?
Just one short thing, your worship, and a reminder to the public out there, because everybody keeps complaining about the price of gasoline, yet as I say, people go into safe way to cost, go to other supermarkets, buying loads of water bottles, which cost more than gasoline, they cost over $2 a litre, but nobody complains about that, and they can have it for free at the tap, which has fewer impurities than the ones that's bottled. But people still go and buy water. It's incredible.
Go figure. It's one of those conundrums in our society, that people are persuaded by advertising from big companies that bottled water out of a plastic bottle is better than the high quality water that we're providing through our taps. And they persuade people, you're right, to pay as much as they paid for a litre of gas for a bottle of water. It's crazy. I know that the elementary school classes that visit me, that's one of the first things I talk to them about, and hopefully, all of those eight, nine and 10-year-old kids will educate their parents that you don't need to buy bottled water, is you can get it right out of your tap, and save the family a lot of money, and save a lot of oil, because we're not producing those plastic bottles. And if you ever see those plastic bottles in our lakes and rivers, you know what damage they can do. So with that, you ready for the question? All those in favor, opposed and carried. Item three. This is to obtain council approval of the subject maintenance agreement, which has been negotiated with the city of Coquitlam for North Road. Questions called, all those in favor, opposed and carried. Item four. This is to request council approval for a new five-year licence for the Burnaby Lake Rugby Committee to operate the clubhouse portion of the fieldhouse at Burnaby Lake Sports Complex East. Questions called, all those in favor, opposed and carried. Item five. This is to inform council of the Parks Recreation and Culture Commission's response to Burnaby District Youth Soccer Association request for a fee discount. Questions called, all those in favor, opposed, carried. Item six. This is to change signing officers on city bank accounts. Oh, councillor McDeenel.
Just a question, I noticed that you were on it originally, and now you've been taken off also? Don't trust you anymore, or what?
I don't know why I'm taken off, didn't break my heart. Tell me, Ms. Jorgensen, why I'm taken off?
He was a signing officer previously, and now he's not.
That's the one that's most important, that's all the employees' checks. It's just a lot of, 3,000 checks is a lot of checks to sign. All right, you ready for the question? All those in favor, opposed and carried. Item seven. This is to seek council approval for a road closure for the 11th Annual Burnaby Neighbourhood House, Community Open House and Street Party Event. Questions called, all those in favor, opposed and carried. Item eight. This is to request that council bring forward a bylaw to appropriate $413,460 from capital reserves to finance nine projects in Parks Recreation and Cultural Services. Councillor Jordan.
Thank you, your worship. I support the committee's report, I just have one question for Mr. Allen, or maybe a suggestion. At Riverway Golf Course, because we entertain so many guests there, and probably maybe even more so in the future, at Burnaby Mountain, I see more and more people going for a lovely stroll after dinner down the 18th Fairway, which is a very dangerous thing to do, especially even myself, although the ball wouldn't hurt them very much if I hit them, but some people, and I actually spoke to a couple the other day, I said, "You maybe shouldn't be like walking down this path, in your lovely sunset walk after dinner at the clubhouse." So I think maybe one of the things we could have is some signage that basically says, "Please stay within the confines of the clubhouse for dinner," and that walking by non-golfers is not permitted, and we've also got those birds there now, and I see people coming out, looking to go and take pictures of the Santal cranes too, and they're just like wandering the golf course. And it's, golf course is not a safe place to be if you're going in the opposite direction of people hitting the ball.
We'll undertake to do that, it's also a liability risk for the city, so we...
Yeah, thank you.
Never mind the people driving the cars. All those in favor, opposed and carried. Item nine. This is to obtain council approval toward a contract for the 2016 South Slope Creek Erosion Mitigation Project. This is a project, just to note that this is a project which shows our continuing commitment to the streams in Burnaby and protecting those streams, and this is no inexpensive task to take on. It costs a lot of money, and to be able to protect those streams and to ensure that they continue to be a vital part of the ecology in our city, and it's something that I don't think is recognised often, that there is this very large commitment. We don't boast about it, we do it as a matter of course, but there is a lot of work that goes on to mitigate any kind of damage to those creeks as a result of erosion and sedimentation, and keeping them in good condition is an expensive part of our infrastructure, but one that we take great pride in. In other cities, they covered those ravines in and piped them, and we continue to maintain them, but it is an expensive issue to be able to do so, and so I think it's something that should be noted by people out there, particularly the people who enjoy walking through our beautiful ravines, that we're doing a lot of work to protect them for them. All right, you ready for the question? All those in favor, opposed and carried. A motion to rise and report. All those in favor, opposed, carried. A motion to adopt the report of the committee. All those in favor, opposed and carried. Bylaws, councillor Volko, please.
For first, second and third reading, I move that bylaw numbered 13620 be now introduced and read three times.
Moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed and carried.
For consideration in third reading, I would move that bylaw numbered 13527 be now considered, read a third time.
Moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed and carried.
For third reading reconsideration and final adoption, I would move that bylaw numbered 13431 be now read a third time, reconsidered and finally adopted, signed by the mayor and clerk and the corporate seal affixed there too.
Moved and seconded, discussion? All those in favor, opposed and carried.
For reconsideration and final adoption, I would move that bylaws numbered 13214, 13604, 13616, 13617, 13618 and 13619 be now reconsidered, finally adopted, signed by the mayor and clerk and the corporate seal affixed there too.
Been moved and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed and carried. New business. Councillor Jordan, please.
Yes, your worship, for the information of the rest of council and those listening, I just wanted to inform everyone that the request for expression of interest in city lands for non-market housing was put up on the B.C. bid website last Tuesday, Mr. Palchay, I believe, yeah, early last week, so we now have the information available for not-for-profits and interested people to give us their expression of interest in the two properties on Sixth Street and Hastings about building some non-market housing, so I thought that was a good news event to share with everyone. And then also on the purple pages, I see, there was the very last item, is a letter from a Ms. Annie Louie of Brentwood Drive, and a grade 10 student, and this person needed to be in the room with Mr. Trudeau last week when he was consulting people about housing in the region. It's a wonderful, wonderful letter, and this person in grade 10 gets it, and she talks about, you know, what needs to be done to help with issues around housing in the Lower Mainland, and in one page she says, "More than a lot of folk are called experts I have seen and heard in a long time." So she says at the end, "I'm looking forward to a timely response from you." So I definitely think that we should have a response to her letter and encourage her to keep up the good work, she should be running for office someday, I think it's a wonderful letter.
All right, and did you want to send that from the Community Development Committee, or would you...
Yeah.
All right, so we'll send her a letter back from the Community Development Committee, and you can even invite her to come and speak to you.
And since the public, since this letter is public already, I'm going to pass it to my friend up in the press gallery, and hopefully he can get a hold of this young woman, because she's obviously quite attentive and knowledgeable on the topic.
Well, you know, and I wanted to also mention that we had a really good meeting between the Intergovernment Committee and the Metro Vancouver Housing Committee and the Housing Corporation, talking about much more aggressive efforts on behalf of the Metro Vancouver Organisation to be looking for opportunities for rental and subsidised housing. I think that those opportunities will increase over the next while. There still is no meat on the bones in regard to exactly how the monies that have been committed by the federal government or matching funds from the provincial government will be distributed, but at least there's money on the table and there is discussion, and we're hopeful that we can look at ways in which Metro Vancouver can expand its role, because they've been a very effective housing provider, but they've been very, very limited in their ability to do anything, much as B.C. Housing has been very limited over the past years. And we're looking forward to seeing whether or not we're able to work with them to achieve more than has been achieved in the past in regard to rental housing, and more particularly social housing.
You.
Councillor Wang.
I just share a community event, the Chinese Cultural Heritage Festival will be held on July 31st, Sunday, in Swan Guard in Central Park. That is the second year of this event. So last year, the event attracted about 10,000 people gathering in the Swan Guard, and Swan Guard become the most popular, you know, facilities to serve in the diverse culture in Lower Mainland. So I'm very happy this one will be coming again, and wish everyone put this date on the calendar, because we have so many events in July. So the Chinese Cultural Heritage Festival will be held on July 31st.
Thank you. Swan Guard Stadium, be there or be square. All right, councillor Calendino.
Thank you, your worship. I'm looking at the last item on the purple pages, G, which is a letter from a grade 10 student in Burnaby, who seems to have done...
That was just the topic that councillor Jordan spoke on.
Oh. I must have been sleeping. Did she make a recommendation?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, her committee's going to respond to the correspondent.
I was going to ask somebody respond. Actually, what I was going to ask is that she'd be asked to send this to the Prime Minister, to the Minister responsible for housing in Ottawa and the corresponding ones to the problems, if I can friendly ask that of the committee.
All right, well, why don't we, uh, why don't we have the, uh, committee, uh, send that letter and our response off to those agencies to make clear that, uh, as Counselor Jordan said, that grade 10 students get it. Why can't we get something done at a much higher level?
Exactly, and they have to do more and more studies and more research and et cetera.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Counselor Dollywalt.
Thank you, your worship. I, um, I would like to, uh, present a motion tonight's meeting, this, uh, uh, the reason I haven't given and noticed it, and I hope, uh, your worship, you can scare a note, notice required tonight. This is regarding a, um, a possible, uh, resolution from city of Burnaby and support of post-secondary education funding that has been, um, sort of, uh, stagnating for a while, in fact, it's been reduced. There is a currently, um, uh, I guess a bit of a campaign going on by Federation of Post-Secondary Educators. It's called Open the Doors in response to the, the cutbacks in the adult basic education and English as a Second Language programs and launch of skills for job loop and your worship.
Why don't you read out the resolution and I'll ask if there is any requirement for notice?
I, I would read the, uh, prior collage, your worship, with that background. Therefore, we resolve that Burnaby City Council endorse the Federation of Post-Secondary Educators Open the Doors campaign and pledge support for a fully funded public post-secondary system. And we further resolve that council requests the mayor to write a letter to Minister of Education Mike Bernier, Minister of Advanced Education Andrew Wilkinson and Premier Clerk, requesting the Government of British Columbia to restore full funding to BC public post-secondary system, including free tuition for adult basic education and English language programs. And we finally resolve that this motion be submitted to the Convention of the Union of BC Municipalities.
All right. Is there any requirement for notice? I don't see any. There is a seconder. Question's been called. Did you want to say anything more about it, Counselor Dollywalt?
No, your worship. Well, I know, your worship, thank you. I, I believe, uh, the, the reason for this one obviously is the cutoff date by coming up soon and I wanted to make sure that this reached the, the union in, in time.
All right. All right, if you're ready for the question, all those in favor, opposed, and carried. Is there any other new business or inquiries? Seeing none, a motion to adjourn.
Question.
All those in favor, opposed, and carried. Thank you very much to council and staff and to everyone who was with us tonight.